Media noise verification. March 28th. Okay, Jessa, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Bob, how about our mission statement?
Serve with passion to create, to ignite creativity, innovation, and excellence.
Thank you. Roll call, we have six of the seven board members with one excused and one student rep. And Ryan, your team looks good.
Yep, my team is here.
All right, I look for motion to approve the agenda. Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we open an agenda. We'll roll right on to reports with item A being district strategic initiatives update by the superintendent's management team and Ryan. All right, so on those updates, what questions do we have? Well, if you think about it when Ryan's talking, we'll come back to you. Ryan Mills, do you have?
This is the time of the year where we're, we've, we go around and we do our building walkthroughs with building and principles, building and grounds, technology, and with finance to look at, you know, what summer projects, if there are any summer projects that we need to have completed. And those are ongoing right now, or currently having, and they'll come up later, conversations about possible staffing needs across the district. And just know that we are continuing to have conversations with ISG. We have an update meeting tomorrow at both with the elementary project and the high school project, and I've been spending some time the last two weeks having some pretty good conversations with local businesses. Today I had the opportunity to go to Toma and Cardinal IG. Very interesting, had a very nice conversation with the person there. And it's just, it's eye opening to me about the opportunities that are out there and excited to, you know, in the future, provide some of those to our students.
I had a question.
Oh, and then, I'm sorry, one last update. I did just so you know, Jen and I did send a letter to La Crosse County here last week with our request to purchase up to thirty acres for the amount that the just, the board indicated at our last meeting. Sorry, Sean.
No, thank you. Just the middle school, you met with new owner of Tri-State Carpets to go over the LVT flooring warranty replacement. Then was there an issue with the flooring? I don't recall this.
Yes, so primarily Scott Johnson's been working with them, but I've talked to them as well. So the LVT flooring that we put in, there are certain rooms where that's coming up. It's not the glue. And it's actually, they found that it's faulty flooring, and so we've had to work with the manufacturer on that, and they finally have honored their word in the agreement, so they'll be replacing that. It'll start off and on a little bit in the spring, room by room, but at the end of the summer, the entire building, the LVT, will all be brand new and replaced.
And when did we, when was it put in, the faulty stuff was put in, remind me when? What was the date, the year?
Um, it was, what, six years ago, whenever we did the renovation, yeah.
Yeah, and the, the life expectancy of it is what?
Oh, it's.
Like the warranty?
Twenty, thirty years, yeah.
Thirty years, yeah. And so it's fully, fully warranted and not costing us to replace all that?
Us at all, no.
And it's the entire middle school?
Yes. The LVT areas of the middle school, there's carpeting, there's some different flooring, but the LVT areas, yeah.
Yeah, because I've read that, and I'm like, that is a lot.
Yep.
And I wanted to make sure that we weren't footing the cost of that at all.
No, it's been quite the conversation going back and forth with manufacturer and the installer, and then the installer, that changed, ownership changed hands there, but we were able to make sure that that gets replaced fully, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I remembered. So at the, at the high school, we have Narcan, Justin? Sorry, at the high school, we have Narcan, and it's in the, with the AED. Do we, do we train people? I know we go through different types of trainings, but do we train people on administering Narcan and when to administer it? Because I was used to the injector, so that's why I asked. Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, all good questions. Do we have anything else? Okay, item B under reports, business operations committee.
Okay, well, basically, we've sort of had a table our committee in, and we'll be discussing the budgeting and staffing later on, but we're just looking at hiring some teachers and for our consumer ed and our tech ed and psychologists and that's really about it. And we really, we're under the discussion of everything, and we're trying to figure out what our balance is, what our budget's going to be looking like down the road two, three, four, or five years from now by hiring. So we got all that coming up, and that's sort of where we left off.
All right, sounds good, Tom. So we'll get back to that under section five, discuss, consider, and take action. So we can move on. Connection with the community, item A is board reports by high school student reps. Jessa?
Last Saturday, the boys' basketball season came to an end in a tough game against Wausau East, which was played at the Wisconsin Rapids High School. The boys had a great season, making it to the sectional finals. This concluded the winter sports season, sports season, and the spring sports are now underway. This past week in the track, teams competed at, on Friday at St. Mary's and on Saturday at the University of Wisconsin La Crosse. They have a couple of weeks of practice before their next meet, which will be at Stevens Point. The softball team started their season last Monday and is currently preparing for their first game, which will be against Central on Thursday night. The baseball started practice last week with pitching and catching, and today was their first day of official practice for the season. Depending on their, on the weather, they will scrimmage on Alaska on Saturday or have an intra-squad scrimmage. The girls' soccer team started practice today and will have two-a-day practices all week. Their first game is on April 3rd, when they will take on Bear Boo at home. The drama department recently had two successful performances of their show, Sister Act. They're already preparing for the summer musical, Disney's Descendants, as they had auditions last Monday. This will be the last show for the senior students. Last Thursday, the art department hosted a banquet to show off the students' artwork that had, that they have created over the year and to celebrate students in grades K through twelve, who had their pieces selected for the art show. There is also a show coming up at which senior art students can display their artwork.
All right, thank you, Jessa. Board, do we have questions for Jessa? We do not, thank you. Next up is correspondence, and we do not have anything tonight. And so moving on to public comment at board meetings, per board policy 167.3, do we have anyone, Jen? Also, no. We'll keep going. The consent agenda includes minutes of the regular board meeting of March 10th, 2025, and a special meeting of March 3rd, 2025. Invoices to be paid, co-curricular recommendations for volunteer girls' soccer, volunteer track, assistant softball, volunteer baseball, and assistant boys' tennis coaches. Also includes resignations and retirements and donations. And our donations tonight are as follows. West Ham Skoltes received donations for the blood drive from Linda's Bakery, Hanson's IGA, Lee Cooley Cheese Castle, and Culvers of La Crosse.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
With regard to, obviously volunteers, those are unpaid, but assistant positions, they're, they're, are they paid? And usually they put a, what percentage on here next to them? So usually it's like, you know, if it's a paid, let's, let's just say assistant boys' tennis, it's like point two or whatever. It just, so it made me think all of these positions are volunteer, but I don't think that's the case.
Sure, but I'm guessing that what's on there is the percentage, what is based, what is on the schedule?
There is no percentage.
So I, what I'm guessing is that Mariah, who is the assistant softball coach, she is getting the percentage that is based on the co-curricular salary matrix? That is the full percentage that is on our unit resources. So that's why he probably didn't specify. So say if it's on the salary matrix, four percent, if she was getting less, state less. But we, okay. So we can, that's something that in the future, you want to have the percentages there.
I think to Sean's point, it's just what we're used to, so this feels like it's missing.
Correct. So that, but then it also, we have, you know, I'm all for volunteers. Right. What we're saying is volunteers are volunteers, but assistants are paid, but, but then it's like, okay, we have all these positions that feel like they're all unpaid, but that's not the case, just because it's different from what's normally on there, so.
They break it down. He's broken it down fast. It's less than a full assistant. But I hear what you're saying, I will take care of it.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Right, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, consent agenda is carried. Next up is to discuss, consider, and take action if appropriate regarding strategic initiatives. Item A is high school request for an overseas trip. Kelly, could you turn on the mic? Well, push the button so the red light comes on, and then.
Good?
Uh, no. Or that one's broken. Eric's got you.
All right, thank you. Oh, yeah, I can hear, I can hear myself now. Okay, so anyway, so I'll start over. So we've been doing trips, international trips, so I do it, I'm the advisor of the ecology club. And every two years, we've been doing a trip along with the Spanish club. And so I participated in the first three trips, so I'm here to just try to, or to ask for permission to do our next trip in the summer of 2026. So as you can see, our plan or our proposal is to do a trip to Peru, including Cusco, Machu Picchu, and Lake Titicaca. So what I'm going to do, I'll just quickly go through kind of what the trip entails. So first of all, why, you know, we always put a lot of thought into deciding where we want to go. So for Peru, why do we want to go to Peru? So obviously, there's a lot of rich ink and culture, several world heritage sites, I'll talk a little bit about those, that we would have an opportunity to visit. Doing this with Spanish club, obviously, to give students an opportunity to practice the language and be around, you know, Spanish language speakers, always a good opportunity for them to get that, to do something like that. And for me, as ecology club advisor, Peru is one of the most biodiverse countries in the world, so having an opportunity to also experience a little bit of that as well. So I'll just go through the itinerary here quickly. And so day one, we would, we would fly to Peru. Day two, we would spend the day in the capital city of Lima. These are some of the sites we would visit, Government Palace, which is the official residence of the president of Peru. Arch Bishop's Palace, City Hall, and Lima Cathedral, which was built in 1602. We would also visit the Largo Herrera Museum, which is a museum of pre-Columbian art and artifacts. Also the San Francisco Monastery, and then we do a walking tour of Miraflores, you can see the picture on the bottom right there, which is basically kind of a beachfront tourist district in Lima. Day three of the trip, we would go to the Sacred Valley, which is where Cusco is located. That first day, we would actually fly from Lima to Cusco and to where the, I don't know if I could pronounce this one or not, I'll try, practice a couple of times. So Olantaytambo, I think, is something like that, which is basically what that is. It was a personal state of the Incan emperors. So we would, we would visit that site. And then the big, the big one would be day four, an opportunity to go to Machu Picchu, which I'm sure we're all familiar with, the lost city of the Incans, was just rediscovered in 1911. And so that would be a full day trip. We would travel to Aguas Calientes by train and then walk to Machu Picchu, and we would spend the day at Machu Picchu on day four. Day five, return back to the Sacred Valley, Cusco. Part of that day involves going to the small village of Pizac, where they have essentially like a large market with a lot of like authentic Peruvian arts and crafts. We get an opportunity, and this is pretty typical with these trips. We would get an opportunity to visit like a couple workshops, and this particular one where they do ceramics. So students would get a hands-on opportunity to learn how to make ceramics and obviously shopping, you know, get a chance to, to shop at the market as well. That same day, we'd also visit these two sites, the Cora Concha Temple and the, I don't know that one either, Sasehuanin Temple. The Cora, the Cora Concha Temple was the most important temple in the Incan Empire, and the fortress is actually the historic capital of the Incan Empire. So all these sites are kind of located in that same area in the Sacred Valley. Day six, we would travel to southeastern part of the country to visit Puno. And Puno is the capital city of that region of Peru. It's also located on the shores of Lake Titicaca. Visit the Recchi Temple, which is another archaeological site, Incan site, that was located, located at an important crossroads in the Incan Empire. Day seven, we would basically have the day at Lake Titicaca, which is the highest navigable lake in the world. We'd get to go to Tequila Island. Tequila Island is famous for, basically for textiles. And then the Euros Floating Islands, which I think absolutely fascinating, basically a group of people who for a thousand years have lived on these floating islands on Lake Titicaca, that they actually make out of reeds, so we'd get an opportunity to visit, visit a couple of those islands on day seven. And then day eight, we would, kind of in that same region, we would travel to Juliaca, capital city in a different province in Peru, and tour the Silustani archaeological site with, which is an ancient burial grounds that actually predates the Incans, going back to 500 AD, and then return home on day nine. So I'm not sure, I don't know how this works, but I do have a video on here. I don't know if click on it, okay. So these are students that went on the last trip, with us just kind of talking about their experience from the last trip. Can't really hear it. All right, you like about the Costa Rica trip?
My favorite thing about the Costa Rica trip was probably meeting new people and getting to actually use the Spanish skills.
Kind of, sort of. Okay. All right, Julia, what did you like about the Costa Rica trip?
My favorite thing about the Costa Rica trip was probably meeting new people and getting to actually use the Spanish skills we've learned the past four years.
All right, thanks, Julia. Katie, what did you like about the Costa Rica trip?
I really liked, we just saw very different things, like there were trees that we don't.
Yeah, it's not loud enough.
And getting to see that.
Yeah, we can, we can move on past that. So just continuing with the handouts that you have, well, we'll just go to the next slide here. You'll see that, actually, I'm gonna. So I've been doing, I've been doing trips with EF Tours, I guess it's been twenty-two years now. My first trip I did with this company was 2003. And one of the reasons I always choose to travel and have always chose to travel with this company, they have the new two, the two neck sheets that you see, they talk about the peace of mind program and the safety first program. So the peace of mind program, just kind of essentially what, what that is, is I can essentially kind of read it. So we understand that plans can change due to unforeseen circumstances. EF Tours provides an exclusive peace of mind program to account for such situations. This program is automatically included for all travelers and can be enacted at the group level for any reason, including terrorism, pandemic, or other world events. So things happen, right? So obviously, 2020, we were supposed to do a trip to Dominican Republic. We were not able to do that, obviously. And so that trip got moved to 2022. There were students who had signed up that, you know, essentially were able to get their money back because that was kind of an unforeseen circumstance that happened. So this, this program just guarantees that they're able to either, you know, use a voucher to go on a different trip or get refunded, depending on circumstances, obviously. On the next page too, it talks about the safety first program. And this, this has to do with, you know, any, anytime there could be a situation in a country that makes it less safe to travel to that country, that happens. And I actually was looking this up. The State Department has four levels of rating for safety from one to four. And Peru is a two. Costa Rica is also a two, which we went to two years ago. England is a two, Spain is a two. So basically what that means, any country that's rated as a two just means extra caution, so it's more of a situation of like, be aware of like pickpocketing, things like that, that can happen. So basically, every European country is rated as a two. Peru is also same as Costa Rica, which we went to in 2024. So what this essentially talks about is if you find yourself in a situation where that changes for some reason, we, they, we, you know, you can either also get refunded, or what they will do sometimes is give you a trip of equal value to a different country. That actually happened to us when we were in Panama, didn't happen to us. There was students who were on a Costa Rica and Nicaragua trip. Nicaragua had become unsafe, and so they got switched to a different trip, and they ended up with us in, in Panama that, that particular summer. So it just is basically looking at any kind of possible contingencies that might happen in a situation like that. This talks a little bit about, I'm not going to get into the details, but with the, the cost of this trip, it also comes with travel insurance and like health insurance. We basically include that in the price. EF includes that. You can actually opt out of that. We used to opt into that, but we don't do that anymore. We opt out of that. We did use that in 2022. We were in, I can't remember the city, in Dominican Republic. We had really bad weather. We got stuck an extra day. So we ended up getting a hotel, and we had, you know, basically had to feed twelve kids, and we were able to use that insurance to not have to pay for any of, any of that. That was all refunded to us when we got back. So just moving forward here, the last slide I have, and then I'll take any questions. So tour date, we're planning 2026. The cost, you can see the cost is here. We looked at some various different trips. Initially, we looked at like an eleven-day trip to Peru, that included two extra days there, but that was pushing $5,000. Like we, that's, we wanted to keep the cost down closer to four, so we chose to do the nine-day trip. So you can see the cost is here for that. So we've already talked about what we would like to do for next year. Obviously, I don't have any specifics about fundraising. Our plan is to do that for this trip next year. So we've, you know, we've already talked to a few businesses about doing like, you know, some, some type of like cookout type things. I know that's done with like chicken, chicken queues and things like that. We've done a couple, just like bake sales. We usually make between two to, two to $250 every time we do that. So just some ideas of some fundraisers, with the understanding where we know we're not going to make $4,000 first, per student, obviously, right? But the idea is if we can do anything to help bring that cost down for some students, we want to do what we can to help them in that situation. So that's pretty much what I have. I guess I'm just asking of you for permission to do this trip in June of 2026. Does anybody have any questions for me?
How many students do you, would you anticipate would, might be interested in this?
So we've had, it was like ten, eleven, and twelve for the three trips, so usually about two, about, about that, I would say. I'd say between ten and fifteen. And so with that in mind too, I didn't tell you this part, so for every six students, we have a chaperone. So I would be that first chaperone. If we had twelve students, or say we had ten students, it'd be Maggie Maxwell, our Spanish teacher, would be our second chaperone. If we had eighteen students, we have Elaine Remus, she's another science teacher. So we have a plan for up to eighteen students, if we have that many signed up. But typically, we've got usually around ten or twelve students, each of the three previous trips that we've done.
I know you've gone with this agency for quite some time. Have you ever looked at other ones to do like a cost comparison?
I, I have. There's a company called Explorica that's pretty similar. And the reality, the reality is this is a bit of a, kind of a more low-end cost-wise. There are companies that do more expensive trips. A lot of it just has to do with like the hotels that you stay in, you know. And so that, that, and also time of the year can play a big role too. This is actually a good time of the year to go to Peru price-wise, because it's, you know, they're opposite of us, so it's kind of like they're winter there essentially. So it's actually cheaper to go this time of the year than it would be during like November, December, January, February. I have, yeah, definitely. And I've considered, there was, there's, there are several companies that do it, for sure, yeah, so. But I've just, I've always been so happy with EF, like I've had so many, I've, you know, any situ, where I've had situations, things went wrong, like where we got stranded for a day. I had a situation in 2012 where we, we were going to Belize, and we had a situation where we weren't able to get on the, on the planes. And they, they were super helpful, getting that all figured, sorted out for us. And so I, maybe a little brand loyalty there, you know what I mean? Because they've always been like, you know, I've been very happy with them. And I've done, I think I've done twelve or thirteen trips with them at this point, so, yeah.
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So who is eligible to go on this trip?
So it's open for any high school student. Yeah, at, at this point, yeah.
So they don't have to be part of ecology club or Spanish club?
We've kind of done that in the past, but we're not holding that stipulation for this trip, yeah.
Okay, and the cost for the chaperones, how is that covered?
So the way it works for the chaperones is for every six students, you get a, it's a, it's a free spot. So the chaperones do not pay to go on the trip. And that's pretty standard. So if you look at all the companies that do this, that's pretty much what, that's not pretty much, that's what they all do. It might vary. It might be six for some companies, it might be five for some, or eight for some. It varies, but yeah, that's how that works for, for the chaperones.
So in the years that you had ten and eleven, did one person go, or did two?
So we had two, and then what we did is we split the extra cost. So it's kind of like prorated. So last year, I think we had, I think we had eleven or ten. I think it was eleven. It, it wasn't twelve, so we, so basically, we split the, we split the cost between, it was Mrs. Phillips and I. So we just split that extra cost between the two of us, yeah.
Okay. And then some. And then some of the recent trips, what, what was the out-of-pocket? So this.
Are you talking about like total cost?
Right, so this time it's forty-one oh nine per student.
Yeah. Um, I think Costa Rica was, I, I was not the one, so that was, I, uh, that was. I can't tell you exactly because that was, Mrs. Phillips set that up, but I believe it was thirty-four, thirty-five, it was a little bit less. Um, and I think Panama was, Dominican was like twenty-eight, a little bit, um, less as well. But they were, you know, not quite as far, uh, you know, so it's cheaper and things have not gotten cheaper, unfortunately, the same trip, you know? I believe we, when we looked at doing this one in twenty eighteen, it was. I think it was like thirty-four, thirty-two, just to, you know, kind of comparison of what it is today.
Okay.
And this is, uh, the funding for this comes from the families who want to send their children, there's no cost to the school district?
Correct, yeah.
And then, even though. So, so then a question comes up on fundraising, does, does fundraising still need to be approved by Justin? Because it's a school.
We had a good conversation about concession stand availability at winter sports, so that trying to stay within some of the. Relevant things that we're already doing rather than.
Yeah.
Finding an additional thing. Uh, Spanish and Ecology Club worked some of those fun, or worked some of those concession stands this last winter. Some of them that they can increase their participation there.
Uh, is there like, uh. High school credit for the kids that go? Cause I noticed that you mentioned, like. The, I don't, not using the right terminology, but like you listed, you know, world cultures for, uh, history.
Yeah, that's a great que- question. There is not credit.
Yeah.
In identifying the rationale or the reason for choosing this. Kelly and I talked about the, the benefits kind of across the curriculum that a student who would choose to go to this would benefit, and that's why.
Yeah, and I think like, wi- with our standards-based grading, it was actually really interesting to see, like, what, what, what does this actually do, you know, like, what do we actually cover, like? Um, and it was interesting, this is just kind of a side note, like. Looking at all, like, I, I live in the science world, right, and so looking at curriculum from the other departments was really interesting to kind of see. And how that fits in with what we do with these trips and, yeah, so it was, um, kind of eye-opening to me, to kind of see the different learning targets that we hit with these trips.
I've asked a lot of questions as well, have any?
I know we have some pretty extensive policy requirements for trips like this, and I would assume if we're here talking about this, this checks all those boxes.
Yeah, in, um. In the board packet, or in our summary packet, I did attach the policy that this refers to. Um, and anything that's international needs to be board-approved, that's why they're here, so.
Is there a minimum, like if you, you said six requires one chaperone, let's say you get four?
Yeah, you know, that, that's a good question, so, um, I've, I've done trip, I di- I've done a trip with three students, um. I've done a strip, I've done a trip with thirty-five students, so I've kind of been all over the place. I mean, that's kind of, I guess, at my discretion, I would tell you that if, if I had three students, I would, I would do the trip, yeah. And anything above that, like, if it's one student, I may as well just go myself, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
At that point, it's kind of, there'd be no, no reason to, to do the trip. Um, that's never happened, but I mean, if, if that situation did happen, I, you know, I've, I've never been as, I had one situation where I had three students and. Basically, it was where we tried to do three trips, three years in a row, um, which was just to, you know, it's kind of like trip fatigue essentially, you know? So in that situation, we had three, and I still went on that trip, but I, yeah, so. I would say basically not, not, no, unless it was one or two students.
And have.
Yeah.
Have students, have, have you floated this by to see what kind of interest there is for.
Oh, for sure.
For this and.
Yeah.
What's your tape, what's your.
Yeah, I mean, I've, for, I mean, there's, kids are very excited about, about this and, um. You know, we're, we're getting to where this is becoming a little bit, hopefully more of an established thing we, we do every two years, um, so students are kind of aware and. Um, I talk about it with my Spanish cl- my ecology club kids. You know, I have to be a little careful because I can't, I don't want to promise them, promise them something I can't deliver, so I'm like, we're going to Peru, you know, I don't want to say that specifically. Cause I don't want to do that until I know that I'm doing that, if that makes sense, you know? Um, but yeah, for sure, kids, um, and word of mouth helps a lot, you know, like kids have had, gone on these trips and their experiences, their positive experiences and. Um, that definitely helps a lot, too, so. Um, you know, obviously, the co- cost is always the tricky part with it, um. And so we do our best to try to give the best experience we can with the lowest price. I know it's not a low price, but. Um, you know, Costa Rica trip was about five hundred, well, I don't know what it would be, I didn't look at what that would be for the next year. Um, but, uh. You know, I got to do a trip like this in high school and it was fifteen hundred dollars, that was also nineteen ninety-two, yeah, whatever it was, you know, so. Things have changed, um, but. Yeah, kids are very enthusiastic about it, yeah.
No question, just a comment, thank you, Mr. Ruckheim, for making these opportunities available for our students, hosting an exchange, a foreign exchange student right now and having a few. In the house over the weekend that are currently in the district. I was just reminded how important it is for our students to develop that global worldview. So thank you so much for making those available. It's great to hear that it's accessible and available for kids outside of the two clubs. And I really hope to see, um, fundraising efforts helpful to make it accessible for students who might not otherwise have the experience, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. I feel the same way. I think it's a great opportunity for kids.
Do we have other questions, or is there a board member that would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, permission granted.
Excellent, thank you. You can see the smile on my face, I'm excited, so. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. To find where we're at. Okay, uh, item B is staffing request for twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
I know we had a conversation on this during biz op. Um, there's still some questions that were out there, um, that we want to continue to look at going forward, and then I'll toss it over to. Uh, the board for s- for some discussion on this. I know some things that, uh, are requested for us to give solid numbers on, or partially solid numbers on, and these are some things that. I took from our discussion, and I'll bring it back here, and we can go from there. Um, realistically, what is our overall current staff budget? I think that's a number that, uh, the board wanted to hear. Uh, projected increase, uh, per CPI for the upcoming year, obviously, we can't, um, you know, we don't have a negotiated. Contract, and we haven't started those negotiations yet, but, um, we do know what CPI is, and so we could base projections off of what CPI would be for the upcoming year. Um, requests for staffing costs for the upcoming school year, what that, um, what that would be. Then come together with a total projected staff budget for the upcoming school year, and then start to carry some of those projections going forward. Um, so with that, I know we did have discussion over, uh, three possible positions within the district, one a district position. Uh, two other positions for the high school. Uh, with that, I will be quiet and I'll turn it over to the board for further conversation.
So if I look at this right, there's a net increase about a hundred and twenty-one thousand?
That's, that's a projected based upon looking at if we were to hire a person at a professional one level, uh, with a master's degree. That's where that, so, I mean, in the past, there's been entry level that we've used for a beginning-year teacher, which isn't realistic. Um, and so as we are projecting things going forward, you know, a professional one is somebody that's in their seventh, eighth year with a master's degree. And obviously, that would be probably more along the lines, um, of more in the ballpark than hiring somebody at an entry-level position.
What is, what is the acronym FACE? Face teacher?
That'd be Family and Consumer Education.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do Bob and Caitlin, did you guys get one of these?
No.
No. Okay, do we have extras, Justin?
They, they have the list.
I have, I have that, we have this.
Okay.
Thanks, Justin.
Okay. That might help a little bit.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, do you want to add some color commentary, Tom?
Okay, so I was paying attention, but I was also doing some math. So basically, what it looks like according to what we have in the board packet. We're looking at a, a total revenue of twenty-eight million, one thirty-three. We have a, an expense of twenty-eight million, forty-four, giving us about ninety grand. So with that ninety grand, and if we look at a, and I just went on a, cause I think our CPI is two point nine five?
That's what the current CPI is, yeah.
Okay, and so I just ballparked this off of a three point five percent CPI. You'd be looking at four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Subtract the. What's that?
Where are we?
I'm taking the numbers that I got off of the sheet here, which is the employee cost of thirteen million, three hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. So if that's, I'm sort of just ballparking here. So i- if we'd be looking at a three point five, subtract the ninety. Um, you know, you're looking at about another five hundred thousand to our budget. Now, if special ed kicks off from us getting thirty percent to sixty percent. That'll add seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand to our budget. According to what I'm calculating, which is a thirty percent, and that, that number, thirty percent of two million, six hundred.
I don't know if those are accurate.
Twenty-three, I'm going off of what I have here. So, I mean, that's, in a nutshell, that's where we're at, and that's sort of what I wanted to see, is where we're at. Now, it'd be nicer to, what Ryan was talking about, to have those numbers pulled together so we can see a little more accurate forecast and be a little bit more accurate. And this doesn't include our referendum money either. I mean, my gut says we're okay to do this, but it's just a gut hunch.
Sean, you have the, the, from whether it be from our annual meeting or where we're, what's our current budget overall for staffing within the district?
Sorry. So the current wages, salary and benefits is about seventeen million, which is in your annual report. If everything remains status quo for funding purposes. And the continued per pupil costs of three twenty-five per the average pupil. That's an additional five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the upcoming school year in twenty-five, twenty-six. Not to mention, so you're building your budget around a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar potential increase or decrease, depending on what. Health insurance costs relate, what other expenses end up going up. But also included that is the additional for the referendum on the reoccurring portion. So we went from two seven five to three point five in twenty-five, twenty-six on a recurring basis. So if you're looking at the total package portion of it, you're at one point three million. Now, if you're talking in regards to Tom talking about the thirty percent increase for state special ed. Our current categorical aid that we get from the special ed program is about one point two. That's on, based on thirty percent of the expenditures from the prior fiscal year, so when they figure out your calculation for your. For your special ed categorical aid, it is on the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, not the twenty-four, twenty-five upcoming school year, because we. When you do your annual report at the end of the fiscal year, they take what your current expenditures are, and then they pull that forward, so your twenty-five, twenty-six year. Will be on your upcoming expenditures. So if for some reason that would move to thirty percent higher, you're looking at a one point two million dollar increase. In revenue in the special ed program. Now, there's, there's a lot to happen between now and October to see what that number looks like. Could you feasibly do the, um, psychologist portion of it? You could, because of the eighty-four percent portion of what that cost is, and within this budget portion, it says salaries at seventy-six. I'm gonna estimate there's a thirty percent fringe benefit cost in there, just because that's on an average, seventy, thirty. So you're looking at closer to about a hundred thousand of staffing costs for that individual, now, if eighty-four thousand dollars is the percentage, you're gonna get back about twenty-two. Now, there, there's obviously opportunities for the special ed program to either move some dollars around as far as within federal flow-through. Um, the mental health base grant that we continue to get from the governor's office in the state of Wisconsin, that could possibly happen, and that's. On an average of fifty-eight thousand dollars, and that's re- reoccurring, and that's based on your portion of it, so. That piece I could see happening, but by putting all of those numbers together, we would have to get a better estimate about what all that looks like, so. Which would also include the CPI portion of it that we talked about.
And the other thing I want to point out, too, is when you were talking about the seventeen point five million on the employees. Um, I was just taking the thirteen million, three forty-one of the salaries and using that at a three point five percent. I didn't put it to the benefits. So I took the benefits out of there.
Yeah, you, 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 you gotta pick on that portion of it, because if you're increasing one, the other pieces go as well.
So then we're gonna have to do the seventeen versus the thirteen, which is gonna increase it, so we're gonna be seeing.
Seventeen is overall staffing, so that's not the piece that's just related to general fund and the special education department, of which we're talking about, because. If you're talking one fifty within food service, they operate within themselves. And they have a fun balance that whether it covers it, but also keep in mind, that's where increased food prices will either go up or down. And she's got to balance that piece of it, so.
But see, and, and that's what I'm saying, is we, you know, having those numbers a bit better allow us to determine those judgments.
Sure.
And looking forward, I mean, I, I, yeah.
Okay, so. We covered the, the budget piece of it a bit, and just to recap, the ask is for. A one point O F T E school psychologist for next year. A one point O F T E technology education for next year, and a one point O F T E for family and consumer sciences.
I'm, I'd like to make a motion. To hire the additional psycho- psychologist as requested, and hire the, uh, C T E teacher as requested. So we can get going and finding the right people. The F A C E teacher, I, uh, I am not gonna include in my motion, I think we can push that down just based upon pure financial numbers. So my motion is to hire additional psychologist and the tech education teacher.
So Sean, let me ask you a question. Would there be a way that we could, once we get these other numbers from Sean, re dis- re, uh, relook at the F A C teacher?
In my opinion, we've, we've done without, for since two thousand and, we can do it, we can do without for one more year. And get those numbers and have a better idea for next.
and get those numbers and have a better idea for next year. So that's why I left it out. I'll second the motion so we can have some discussion.
Okay, and now we begin. We have a motion, and the second, and the motion includes approving the school psychologists and the technology education teacher, but excluding the family and consumer science teacher. All right, questions and discussion?
Can someone just explain a little bit more about the his, I'm just looking at this for the first time. So could, Justin, maybe you explain a little bit more about the, the family and consumer science teacher, the need there? Just educate.
Can you grab a microphone too, if you wouldn't mind?
So the CTE and FCE or FAC E teacher requests are based on student requests at the high school. So for the last, Crystal was able to give me some information here. In, in 2001, we posted the, in 2001, we posted an FCE position. We actually posted it twice, and we had a total of seven applicants. We offered the position at some point there, but the applicant took a position elsewhere. For the last five years, we've had course requests that would support two full-time teachers in the FCE area, and we currently have one right now. In the CTE area, the last, two years ago, we had enough to support a half-time person, but the last two years, we've had enough course requests to support a full-time person. Part of my thought process in bringing that to the board this year was that there would be an opportunity for us to write some curriculum, to add some additional classes in the HVAC realm and the electrical realm, which I know we've had conversations about with our upcoming building project. So that would get, allow us to be, to hit the ground running with those classes, running when the facility opens, rather than creating the courses once the facility is complete. Does that answer your questions?
I noticed that was the only one of the three that you do, did not phrase that you strongly encourage. So do you, I, can you just let me in on your thought process a little bit more there?
Yeah, well, originally my thought process was, you know, we, we could maybe push that down the road due to it being, there being fewer student requests over a long period of time. As we talked about in the committee meeting though, i- if we post it now, it does give us two kicks at the can in finding somebody. You know, we, we hired a metals and autos person in late August last year, and we didn't have a ton of applicants. Both positions that we're requesting are very specialized positions. So the, you know, as evidenced by our 21, 2021 posting, we had seven applicants for the FCE job. So, you know, I, I think when we hired a social studies position in the last two years, we've had, you know, upwards of high tw- high teens, low twenties. So it's just a unique niche of a, of a employee. And, and I guess the, the, to answer your question specifically, it was the longevity of our requests from our students as to why my, the language in the, in the proposal was stronger for that one.
What other discussion do we have before we do our vote? You got something, Tom?
So I'm sort of thinking what we could do is, you know, what, what Sean said in part of his motion on the CTE teacher and the psych. And then I think if we get some of these numbers together on employee cost, benefits, operations, you know, and, and see our budget, and then do a little bit of a forecast so we can see maybe the next three years, and adding CPI into that, and then also what we might get in extra per student funding, would give me a better feel that we could then possibly at the next meeting, depending upon how everything turns out, approve a FACE teacher. But I do agree that we need to get going on the CTE and the psych. And I'm going to give you my opinion on the CTE teacher. You're not going to touch, touch anybody that's qualified to do that kind of work for 54,000. You're going to be looking more at 75, in my opinion, but that's, that's just me.
Well, I don't think any of us disagree that it might not be more than that number there, but we want to make sure that we're consistent with something as we're going forward with making these projections and, and not playing whack-a-moles. We picked a spot that we would put down and continue to go forward with that, knowing that, you know, in some positions, you might hire people for less, in some positions, you might hire people for more.
I'll also just point out, that's just salary costs. That doesn't include benefits. So it's going to cost the school district significantly more than just that.
Well, we can, we'll put salary and benefits on from, on this as well.
And Caitlin, just for a little history, last year, we spent 200, an additional 225,000 on additional staffing. So the reason for my motion of not approving all three is just this trend of we keep adding significant dollars to our staffing, and that concerns me. So that, that's what, just for your history.
So I have a question about the grant that's going to offset, potentially offset the cost of the school's psych. That's a two-year? Has to be renewed every two-year, or it's?
No, that grant's, that grant's a recurring grant.
Recurring.
That's recurring.
We get it every year?
Yep.
Till they turn it off?
Till they-
Till they turn it off.
Till they turn it off. The, the one that's a two-year grant is the one that we're currently paying for our-
Right.
-school social worker.
So when we talked about some of the positions that we discussed, like our school social worker, which is also through a grant, when that grant expires, we will have to, we'll have the opportunity to discuss whether we want to continue that or not.
There'd be decisions-
Are you proposing we do the same here should this grant go away?
Can you ask me that one more time?
Are you proposing that we do the same thing with the school psych should that grant go away? That we would pay for that position through grant?
I def- based upon the presentation that she gave us a couple of weeks ago, I definitely see the need for that position in our school district. And when that grant goes away-
We're going to find a way to make it-
I would entertain any way we can to find funding to support that position, whether it's through a grant or how, whatever.
Yeah, and we're going to have that same discussion with school's worker.
Correct.
Yeah.
And just so everybody here knows, any position that we have through, currently in the district, it's either grant funded or was funded through some expiring funding source, those things are always topic for discussion when they come up. It's not something that just reoccurs just because we paid for it once. And when we, when we go through a hiring process, if somebody's hired through a grant or an additional funding source, we make it known during that interview process that if the funding goes away and the position goes away unless we see the need for it going forward.
Okay, good, Tom.
So I don't think we're in any big rush, guys, on the consumer ed or the CTE teacher. I don't think two weeks is going to make a difference on those two.
Three weeks.
Oh, is it three weeks?
We have a next meeting until Aug-, April 14th.
Okay, so I'm still going to go with, I'm going to be honest. I think we should probably just look at the psych, get the numbers from Sean before the next meeting, and then review the CTE and the food, and then also look at a reasonable price for the CTE.
So there's already a motion on the table for the psych and the CTE?
We're doing this as a discussion.
Okay, that, that's fair. I just wanted to remind us.
Um, I included the CTE position because I think it is important to get it approved and give Justin and his team as much time as possible to find the right person. And I think three weeks is a lot of time to give up, knowing that we are, we're going to be building that building, we're going to need that person, and finding them as soon as possible, and getting curriculum, there's a lot of work to be done. I don't know whether the, that number there is where it's going to end up being, but I think we need to hire that position and get it approved as soon as possible. So that's why I included it in my motion.
Well, see, and that's the thing is, is I don't, I agree with you. I just don't feel this dollar amount, because if we approve it, that's the dollar amount. And I would rather see this dollar amount increase and get a better chance-
So I think-
Of getting a better person.
The dollar amount is the best recommendation.
You can, you could add 20,000 to that dollar amount and increase the bottom line by 20,000. You're going to have what we would have three weeks from now.
Yeah, I know, but we got to, what are we approving? Are we approving the 54?
You're not, you're, that's a, that's a, an estimate of what-
Just an estimate?
That's just an estimate. That's not saying that's what we're going to purchase or try to hire somebody at, and that wouldn't be the offer. That's the estimate, just so we have numbers in place going forward, rather than picking something else out of the blue.
I'd be good with that.
So if that's our rationale that we want to post as soon as possible, then why would we not have included the family and consumer science position in that? We've been wanting to hire that position since 2020.
Yeah, we haven't had it since 2020. And based upon my previous comments, it is a purely financial thing, where I am concerned with the continuing increased costs. I think the school psychiatrist is absolute necessity. I think the additional CTE is an absolute necessity. And that position, we've dealt without having it for the last five years. It's more of a want than a necessity. And at this point, I'm just a little uncomfortable with the increasing the overall number for staffing every single year by a significant amount, so that's where I draw my line.
Okay, so is there desire then for the team to bring back a detailed recommendation that includes that consumer science position at the next meeting? Or are we kicking it to next year?
My motion just was not to approve it at this meeting, to, to approve these two positions. You can do whatever you'd like to after that.
I was just wondering where your thought process was.
Thank you, thank you for asking.
You're welcome. Okay. Do we have more discussion or questions before we want to vote?
I do.
I see, okay, you've been waiting?
I'm just waiting, I'll wait my turn. Justin, do we know what the average CTE is, position is in the state? Like for, like for, for the trades?
Salary?
Salary, yeah, so what do we?
I don't, but it's going to be based on whatever that-
I don't, but it's going to be based on however that school district pays. I do know that, you know, we, like I said, we posted this, this last summer. We had brand-new people and we had experienced people. So I, I think we are probably, you know, at the, had we hired on one end or the other of that, we, you know, we would have been on both extremes of what that salary would have been.
So I just did a quick query here. The average is approximately 69,999 dollars per year in the state of Wisconsin in 2024. The range is between 58,000 and 83,000. So if we're, yeah, so I think Tom's right, we're low.
Yeah, and if I heard correctly, that estimate is based on a professional one, so it'd be a first-year master's degree person, which is kind of what the standard has been for us to communicate in that, in that general sheet. So I think you're probably right.
So, and, and just to give you an opinion on that, this is not a standard teacher. This is a trades teacher, somebody that can make a lot more money out in the private industry rather than, you know, coming here to teach. So just FYI.
Okay, so there's some concern on what the salary may be, but I think we don't know until we see who the applicants are and what is going to be the best fit for the school. The number that they included, again, was a recommenda- not a recommendation, but their best guess. So I don't want us to get wrapped around the number. We agreed that we want to hire with this motion, so I think-
What are we, what are we advertising to lure people in then?
When we post a position like this, and I can turn it over to Crystal, if Crystal wants to talk, it's basically, it's determined based upon experience and years of service. And that's what we, that's what we go through when we look at our matrix. Crystal, go ahead if you want to talk.
To add to that, to lure people in, for example, I am going to UW Stevens Point on April 11th. They have a job fair, and they have 160 new students or teachers just graduating. So, and CTE is in part of that, FACE is part of that, regular ed, Spanish, all of those positions are basically going to see the booth, so that is part of an advertising. But yeah, the person that applies, they, we then look at the experience and the, what they have for a bachelor's degree or a master's degree.
Thanks, Crystal. Okay, do we have any other questions before we do?
So my question is, do you honestly think you're going to be hiring a teacher for this position?
That's what the posting is going to be, Tom. I understand your concern with the cost.
No, I think he's, he's not talking about just somebody going through the educational system.
We need to hire somebody that has an education license. And if not, then we need to go through a process of hiring somebody with initial education license.
I wasn't finished. So he's more concerned about like having somebody that has the skill set and the background? I think we can get licensing for the person, and that's what Tom's mentioned in past, that this is a, these are unique positions that are not, you know, something that you usually learn. It's usually on-the-job type of training, and I think that's your concern, am I correct?
You're correct.
Okay.
Okay, I trust that Crystal and the hiring team are going to do what's right for the district. So with that, the motion is second, and I'd like to take a vote on that. And let us do a roll call vote this time.
Can we get a repeat of it?
The motion is to approve hiring the 1.0 FTE school psychologist and a 1.0 FTE technology education teacher. Okay, so let's do a roll call. Eric? Sean?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Bob?
Yes.
Caitlin? And the chair is an aye, so that motion is approved. Thank you. We will-
So for clarification purposes for myself and the team, do you want us to come back with updated numbers for a possible family and consumer education teacher at the next meeting? Or wait until the '25, '26 school year?
I would like to see the numbers come across based on what I'd like to see. Because if we can get a projection that's positive, yeah, why not? If it's negative and we can't afford it, well, then we won't. But I don't want to just throw it off another year just because. So if Sean can get us that information, we can look at a few projections, yeah, let's bring it back in the next meeting.
I supported it originally, so I would be comfortable bringing it back again. Anyone else? Okay, I see Caitlin nodding. Okay, sure, yes, let's do it. Okay, next up, for discuss, consider and take action is item C, our early college credit and start now, with attachment aye.
So these requests are from current high school students for the fall semester. As you can see on the, on the document- Um, as you can see on the, on the document, some of those are through Western Technical College. I will point out that, um, Western has changed their programming to be seven-week courses that allows their student population to have greater, um, to take more classes, uh, over the course of the semester, which is why you see a little bit more, um, requests in that first student, and then the, the, um, bottom courses are from La Crosse or Viterbo.
I have a question, like, so if they take, they split the coursework in half, because I have a kid there, um, are the students that are, are doing these classes, it's a seven-week, are they taking another seven-week, or is that just dead time if they're, they've already completed the course?
It really all depends on what, um, that schedule looks like from Western's standpoint. We've had students in both situations.
Justin, I think I ask this every time this comes up, just for my own sanity, these students have exhausted all possibilities in our school district, and that's why you're requesting this, correct?
That is correct. The, the one, um, the 11th grader is the only caveat to that. We're anticipating, uh, scheduling conflicts with this student based on course requests. So this is purely out of, if those scheduling conflicts do come to fruition, this student would have this option. If there's no scheduling conflicts, the student will be in our building taking the courses.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any questions or discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that is approved, and item D is to discuss our second board meeting in May.
Yes, as usual, um, the second board meeting in May does fall on Memorial Day. Uh, we have, our first meeting is the 12th, uh, the second meeting would be the 26th, which is a day off. Uh, and so traditionally, this time of the year, we talk about what we want to do for that second board meeting in May. And knowing that graduation is on Friday, the 23rd, if anything would come up where we need to have any board action, assuming the board members are going to be at graduation, you know, we could call a brief meeting because we have to post that day anyway, because the board's going to be there. But time for this discussion with the boards, we know going forward.
I have a senior this year, as well as an eighth grader, so my vote would be to just not have it, but open to others' input.
Are you looking for a motion on this?
Yeah. We do need to make some type of decision, whatever it might be.
I'll make a motion to cancel the May 26th board meeting, and if necessary, host a emergency board meeting on the 23rd if needed.
That works. Okay. Motion is second. Any other discussion before we take a vote on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that is set, and we'll move on. Our list of to-do items and information requests. Are there items that we would like to see added to that? Or Ryan, anything that you want to call out?
I know that Jen has sent out an email to the policy committee. Uh, we need to set a date for, uh, getting that policy committee meeting together, so we can go over the updated legal recommended changes, um, and get that on the books, so we can move forward.
Ryan, can we just stick around after this? You guys got a minute? Yeah, okay.
And we might want to do that before we have a potential change in, in board members, just to get that meeting on the books.
Yep.
Anything else on our to-do items? If not, we'll end our live stream, and this would be the end of our meeting, so I will make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
And we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.